Okay, I hereby call an order. This meeting is Arizona Boxing and Mixed Martial Arts Convention. Today is March 11th, 2020, and the time is 10:01 a.m. Would those commissioners that are in attendance please identify themselves and state who's joining us on the phone or in person?
This is Joe Pennington, I'm participating by phone.
This is Scott Fletcher, I am participating by phone and I told that Commissioner Peters will not be joining us. Item B is our new business. B1 is pursuant to ARS Section 5-227, 228A, B and E, and 5-229, the new license application submitted by Mr. Thomas Brown doing business at TGB Promotions LLC for a 2020 Boxing Promoter's License. Mr. Brown, are you with us?
No, you missed, uh, Miss Monica Jaffe on his behalf.
Oh, okay. Thank you so much for joining us. We're excited about what you have brewing. Mr. Manessis, will you speak to this, please?
Uh, yes. Uh, Ms. Jaffe is representing TGB, Mr. Tom Brown, um, for a 2020 Promoter's License. They have a tentative date at this time of April 20th, 2020, at the Arizona Federal Theater, which was formerly Dodge Theater, which was formerly, um, Camerica Theater, um, in downtown Phoenix. Um, they have submitted the required documentation. If you look at the packet before you, um, the financial investigator did note, um, a recommended, uh, increase in performance bond. Um, the, the commission may either accept the standard 20,000, um, performance bond or may ask for an increase. Um, I don't think they've shown us a reason why we should need an increase. This is a show that they will be, um, airing on Showtime and I think the, the, uh, financial stability of both this promoter and this event is not in question, so I would recommend that we approve as is.
Very good. Uh, thank you. Um, I think Premier Boxing Champion, yes?
I've got the date is April 18th, 2020.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, yeah, that was my error, it's April 18th, 2020.
Okay.
Yeah, we want to get that date right. Um, very good. Uh, Commissioner, questions, thoughts?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I do not have any, uh, questions or concerns at this point and I would move that we grant a new license application for TGB Promotions pursuant to ARS 5-227, 5-228A, B and E, and 5-229, uh, for a Boxing Promoter's License, a 2020 Boxing Promoter's License.
Very good, thank you, Commissioner. I'm going to second that motion. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Hi. Motion carries two to zero unanimously. Uh, congratulations, we're looking forward to April 18th. Thanks so much for your time.
Great, thank you so much, I'm gonna disconnect.
Alright, thanks Monica.
Okay, take care, thanks again.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Uh, let's press on. B2 is pursuant to ARS Sections 5-227, 228, and AAC R19-2-C604 per persons over the age of 36, the 2020 Professional MMA Contestants Renewal License Application submitted by Mr. Mark Anthony Lopez. Mr. Manessis, will you speak to Mr. Lopez's application, please?
Uh, we don't have Mr. Lopez here, um, and we haven't gotten a hold of him, so I'm gonna ask that we table that one, but I do need to go back to B1I. If we can just go back, one underneath Tom Brown? We just need to talk about that real quick. That's okay?
My bad, my bad, I appreciate that. Let's table B2 in hopes that Mr. Lopez joins us and circle back to B1I, which is the Premier Boxing Champion Series Main Event. David Benavides, 22 and O versus Romer Angulo, 26 and 1, for the WBC World Super Junior Middleweight Title on April 18th, 2020, at the Arizona Federal Theater. Mr. Manessis?
Yes, sir. So there are, so far, two title bouts scheduled for this night of boxing with TGB Brown, uh, Tom Brown's Boxing Promotions. There are both the Benavides fight, as you mentioned, uh, with the WBC, I think this is gonna be a great fight, both fighters, uh, Mr. Benavides coming at 23 and, as you mentioned, a, uh, Phoenix resident who many people at the commission have seen grow up through his boxing career. He's making return back to Phoenix after approximately five years. Um, and Mr. Angulo out of Colombia is 35 at this time, he will be turning 36 soon, I believe he'll probably submit his application before his 36th birthday of this year. Um, both have stellar records and this will be a definitely an exciting fight. Both are coming off of some recent wins and both have a pretty comparable amount of knockouts in their previous fights. So this will be an exciting fight for Arizona and the fans and for us to partner with the WBC again.
Uh, it's terrific, I'm really pleased to see, uh, Mr. Benavides that's on the fight in front of his home court scene and it should end up PDC out, it's just across the board a great thing.
So I don't think we need to vote anything on this?
The newly renamed theater.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, I don't think we need to vote on this, but if there's any questions that you guys want to talk about the bout, it's on the agenda for that reason.
Commissioner Pennington, any thoughts on this?
Uh, no, I, uh, I just think it's gonna be a wonderful event to have, uh, Mr. Benavides back in, uh, Phoenix Boxing again and try to have a hometown crowd, everybody said the same thing and I feel very good, so.
Agreed.
Great event.
Indeed. Thank you, Mr. Manessis, looking forward to this one. Uh, hopefully it'll still be close to Arizona Federal Theater on April 18th.
Yes, hopefully that doesn't change.
Every time I get it figured out, they change that, so hopefully we get a few years of that, but, uh, great, it's gonna be a great night. Um, let's head off to B3, which is pursuant to AAC R19-2-C61H and J, and R19-C-C605T, and R19-2-C606T. Review and consideration of the request by Mr. Thomas Whitmore, a previously revoked licensee to participate in the matchmaker under the outside sanction by the IKF of Arizona. Mr. Manessis, can you sort of touch speed on that?
Uh, yes, so Mr. Whitmore was previously a licensee of the department, um, working under or with, um, the Rage in the Cage Promotions. As you remember, um, that was shut down due to the unsanctioned activity. Uh, Mr. Whitmore did, um, plead guilty and was, um, sentenced to one charge out of the Manusky Justice Court for this matter. He has, um, submitted his documentation which shows that he has paid his restitution to the court on this matter, so his matter with the court has concluded. Um, he has submitted some, um, emails and some letters to the commission for consideration, um, on his behalf. The only thing that's still outstanding on our end is Mr. Whitmore was fined, um, uh, the maximum allowable fines for his involvement in the events, so there is still an outstanding $2,000 fine with the commission, um, and since he's not gonna be directly under the commission, I would recommend that the commission take everything into consideration and if they decide to, you know, rec, uh, approve Mr. Whitmore to work with the IKF of Arizona, that there be a stipulation that at least half of his fine is paid and he make arrangements to finish working on the rest of it, what's left over, while he is allowed to continue doing his work. He is here before you, um, he is right in front of you, so if you want to chat with him, you can.
Mr. Whitmore, good morning, I'm sorry I can't be there, I really wanted to, you know, be, uh, sitting up front, but, uh, I appreciate you coming down, I appreciate your approach to this situation. Um, the commission needs all the good matchmakers we can get and balanced fights are critical to our cards and protecting these fighters too, so, again, I appreciate how you came towards this and I, I hope we can find a way to continue forward.
I do too, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Pennington, thoughts or questions for Mr. Whitmore?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, if Mr. Whitmore could get a little bit closer to the phone or the, uh, microphone, I would appreciate it so I could hear a little better.
Okay, no problem, I'm here.
I would like to know, okay, thank you, I would like to know what you have learned, uh, in your life experience, uh, that's going to allow you to continue to be a professional matchmaker and not encountering the sorts of things that you have in the past, uh, in the past.
Uh, one of the major things that I learned is that, uh, don't follow the wrong people would be the first start. Uh, secondly, I learned a lot of matchmaking, um, how to handle it, how to deal with it. Um, I know that I was very strong at it, uh, I was, uh, just in a situation that it, that I should have left when it got bad and I did not. That was my learning right there.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I have those three questions.
Um, neither do I. Again, I appreciate, uh, your presence for Whitmore, I know it's been a, uh, it's been a troubling time and we've all learned something from it.
Yes.
Going forward, I think the Arizona Commission is always going to err on the side of protecting fighters and balanced cards, so if we do move forward, I look forward to your cards, you have a great reputation for, uh, balanced cards and, uh, entertaining cards at the same time.
Thank you.
Mr. Manessis, do you have any other thoughts about this?
Um, I, I don't, I'm, I'm gonna leave my, um, my recommendation out since I was directly involved in the previous matter, so I'm just gonna leave it up to you guys and the only recommendation I has, have is that if you guys do move forward, that, uh, you consider a stipulation about the fines.
Right, right, which is a 50% immediate and then some sort of plan after that.
Yeah, I understand.
Uh, Commissioner, the chair will be open to motion after this, which would include the notion of, uh, the fine.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, let me ask Mr. Manessis, uh, let's say that we did, uh, approved the renewal of our license and, or a de-license, whichever, and, uh, we had a stipulation that, uh, 50% of the fine be paid and then, uh, an arrangement worked out. If there was something where that arrangement, uh, failed, uh, or was not adhered to, uh, with, you know, a 10-day grace period or whatever that might be, uh, what recourse do we have? Do we at that point, uh, deny the license?
Yeah, so what we would do is we would, um, ask the Attorney General's Office to draft the language on that.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yep.
Okay, great.
Yep, and so they would draft the language that would basically say that, you know, um, give a scenario that if he doesn't pay or doesn't comply with the terms, that would default back to what the original, um, uh, order was, which was a revocation, but also keep in mind that this is not a license with the commission directly, this is just giving him permission to work with an outside sanctioning body that we have jurisdiction over.
Okay. Okay.
So, so I guess, I guess to answer your question, yeah, we'll have the language on the, on the order, but we also have, my, my point is that we have other means as well to enforce it, not only against his license, but we can also, um, impact the IKF of Arizona for working with him if they don't get him to comply as well.
Okay, alright, so we've, we've got some ways, again, you're kind of, uh, at fault, we've got some ways to cure it.
Yes, yeah, I'm confident that we'll be able to handle it.
Okay. Okay, great. Then, Mr. Chairman, if I might, uh, I would move that, uh, we, uh, grant the authority to, uh, Todd Whitmore to participate as a matchmaker under, uh, the outside sanctioning body, the IKF, pursuant to AAC R19-2-C601H and J, I think it is, R19-2-C605B, uh, glasses are not the strongest, they normally are C. And, R19-2-C606, that are brand six, uh, with the stipulation that he paid, uh, 50% of the outstanding fine upfront and if he signed an agreement extracted by the, uh, Arizona Attorney General's Office, that in the event he fails to, uh, uh, continue or to pay his, uh, further fine than his license or his, that we would revoke this authority. Sorry to be so content and I hope Mr. Manessis can clean it up to the record.
Yeah, Ms., uh, Ms. Wagner's over here drafting smoke up, I see it, she's writing everything she can.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, we'll second that motion. Uh, we have a mark and a second, all those in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Hi. Motion carries two to zero.
Can you get a quick minutes?
Uh, Mr. Whitmore, I'm glad to have you back.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, we appreciate your time and pursuit of this. Let's press on to see our information reports. C1 is our event reports. The following events were approved by the Executive Director from February 12th, 2020 to March 11th, 2020. Uh, item, the first item is a request for Thunderbolt Boxing for approval of some of these boxing events to be held at the Arizona Federal Theater in Phoenix, Arizona, April 3rd, 2020. And the second event was a request from Thunderbolt Promotions for approval of the following boxing event to be held at the Celebrity Theater in James River, uh, 25th, 2020. Mr. Manessis, some good things showing up.
Yeah, yeah, on the first one, just to quickly, just give you guys a heads up, on the first one, Thunderbolt Boxing, I believe this is either the fourth or the fifth, um, uh, date change they've done, so I've advised them this is the last one that I would approve. They have yet to have one successful event, so this is the kind of go-all, I told them that if they can't get their event to go on this date, that I would not approve any more events until, um, they came before the commission and you guys had an opportunity to, to talk with them and, and try to see what's going on and why they are unable or unsuccessful to put together a show. So they understand that, they say this show will not be postponed or canceled, um, but we have yet to see anything, um, come to fruition on BoxRec or have any received any documents and we're already, um, under a month on this, so we'll keep track of how it goes.
Uh, that's, that is a shame, um, this is an expensive room we're talking about too, for a first-time show.
Yeah, they, they had previously booked, if you remember, uh, the last year they were trying to do a show at Westworld, um, they, you know, didn't do too well by postponing that and then, uh, came upside down on that show, so they're trying to recover and they're trying to use another venue, uh, we'll see how this plays out for them.
Well, we will, we'll think good thoughts, I hope they call it off, I hope they come to go there, but, uh, I appreciate your background on it too.
Yep, and then obviously, uh, number two, nothing for Iron Boy.
Yes, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I just said nothing for Iron Boy on number two, nothing to add.
Okay. Um, let's jump into our licensing reports. Uh, C2, the following licenses were approved by the Executive Director from February 8th, 2020 to March 6th, 2020. The first being amateur MMA athletes license of 33, second being eight professional MMA athletes license, third being 24 professional boxing athlete licenses, the fifth being five commission official license, and the last includes other licenses issued, two announcers, two cutmen, one manager for matchmakers, 94 seconds, 23 trainers, one outside sanctioning body, and one promoter. It's a lot of licensing, Mr. Manessis.
Yeah, this is that news part we talked about adding into the commission agenda just to keep you guys advised of, of the day-to-day work that, that Carlo and I are taking care of here, this is to kind of make sure you guys are aware of how many licenses are being issued for, for the past month, um, and what's taking place. So this is about, about par right now where we're at, um, as we continue to have events, these numbers will continue to fluctuate and go up based on the events that we have. We typically are licensing about 60 to 80 people per event.
It's really helpful, I really appreciate it, you know, we find ourselves talking to legislators, trying to build a layout exactly what we do on a day-to-day basis, so, thank you, this is really, really good to see.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Manessis?
Please.
On the five, the five commission officials, uh, are those new officials or are those relicensing?
Um, they're all relicensing, um, they just, you know, didn't come in, yeah, they didn't come in and make it in the December time where we did all the officials at our December meeting, so these are officials that most likely either live out of state, a couple of them, um, or like two of them probably came in for, um, the, the special event for a WBC title fight, we flew them in, so Rocky Burke and Esther Lopez out of New Mexico, they came in for that fight, so those will be part of the numbers included, as well as anyone that didn't get their stuff submitted previously.
Okay, alright, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem.
Yes, sir, thank you. Um, let's talk about licenses revoked. Uh, item three is non-medical suspension slash fines support. The Executive Director has issued the following suspension slash fines. The first being Mr. Seth Wheeler, number 150541, that is an amateur MMA athlete license, was suspended on February 15th, 2020, for 30 days and fined $50 due to a positive drug screen. The second is Mr. Diamond Bear, number 497782, for professional boxing athlete license, fined $120 on February 28th, 2020, due to missed weight. Mr. Manessis, will you speak to these two?
Yes, sir, so, just like we did in the last one, this is additional information that I'm trying to include in the agenda to keep you guys appraised of what's going on between events, so, um, yeah, each event, we continue to test, uh, athletes for both drugs of abuse and performance-enhancing drugs. On one of the last fights out of Glendale on, um, Ruff's card, Seth Wheeler tested positive for a prohibited substance in competition, since he is an amateur, it is, uh, about a $50 fine is what I've kind of been going with, um, up to 100 depending on the substance, this substance was, you know, uh, in my view, about $50 a fine was, was fair. Uh, Mr. Diamond Bear, his fine, um, as a pro boxer for missing weight is 20% of his purse with 10% going to his opponent and 10% being assessed as a fine from the commission, so his fine portion was $120, he was approximately three and a half pounds overweight. As you know, um, in both these sports, for MMA and boxing, um, as commissions across, um, the United States were trying to crack down on weight cutting, um, to prevent deaths and unnecessary injuries, so we've implemented how much weight, um, or put a restriction on how much weight someone can try to cut, um, at weigh-ins, and Mr. Bear came to weigh-ins unprepared and, um, and was not ready to, to compete at the weight he had been contracted for, so he was fined and he accepted that fine and was able to compete the next day.
Very good, I think it sends the right message that we gotta have all the guns around, show up on weight.
You know, on, on the weight thing, just a real quick touch on that, um, since we've implemented that, Mr. Bear was the highest overweight athlete we've had out of our last five or six events, we've been averaging about .3 over, .9 over, .6 over, and .5 over, um, his was the highest, so, uh, you know, implementing this change on putting a restriction on weight cutting has definitely affected, um, how weigh-ins are going. Our weigh-ins have been averaging about 20 minutes, uh, significantly cutting down the previous three-hour weigh-ins that we were doing, allowing for time to cut weight.
Right, right, uh, it's fantastic and I, I think it sends the right message, I don't think these fines are out of whack at all, I think it sends the correct message and make sure that, uh, the people get to work at this weeks in advance until trying to make weight in a hotel lobby.
Exactly.
When we stand around and watch.
Exactly.
Right.
Well, very good, I think you're doing a great job with this and, uh, we will carry on. Let's talk about quarterly updates. The following information reports are hereby provided to the commission. First is USA Boxing, Mr. Manessis?
Yes, the USA Boxing just completed two weekends ago, they had a two-day Golden Gloves Tournament, I was able to make it out to their Saturday tournament for a couple hours, um, they had a couple celebrity officials show up on Sunday, Mr. Tony Weeks, former, uh, Arizona referee, uh, well-known star in the amateur boxing program here in Arizona, who is now a world-class referee based out of Las Vegas, traveled out just to come to the Golden Gloves Tournament, helped present a couple of the belts. Um, last weekend, USA Boxing had another amateur boxing event at Pro Edge Boxing Gym, I was able to attend that as well since we had no event last weekend, and I was honored by presenting the belt to the 165-pounder, um, and, uh, was able to hang out and see a lot of people in the boxing community this past weekend, so it was nice.
Well, that's, that's terrific, thank you for getting out and, uh, picking the tires, as it were, uh, amongst the amateurs and the others too. Um, let's talk about the USMTA.
Yeah, Mr. Bob Carmel is here, um, I've invited him to present his information, um, on behalf of USMTA and he is ready to speak.
Hi, Bob Carmel, United States Muay Thai Association of Arizona. Okay, uh, first I apologize for not being in a meeting for a while, I had spine surgery in July and I've opened up a second gym in North Scottsdale, which kind of took a lot of time, so it just opened up in January. Uh, I've also, uh, taken on a second job as the Rules Chairman for the USMF, IFMA Chairman of Rules Committee, uh, this is the group that's pushing for the Olympics in the United States. I was given the task of unifying the rules from IFMA International Rules as to fit to boxing commissions in the United States. Uh, we would have roundtable meetings with representatives of the IKF, WKA, TBA, KIC, uh, almost all the amateur organizations, uh, and we kind of got together in the rules. Uh, and it's not even so much rules, it's more regulations, uh, to meet all the boxing commission requirements in, in the United States. Uh, so that's, that's ongoing, almost done, but what's also come out of that is with sitting all those amateur organizations together, we are now communicating together on, uh, any suspensions that happen in, in our fights. Where in years past, uh, none of us talked to each other really, so now, uh, the IKF and us and everybody else all will share information on suspensions, uh, especially when it comes to be around tournament time, so it's a big plus for us and it's, it's another big step in making everything a little bit safer, uh, in the United States for everybody. Uh, this was our first year of having full medicals for our fighters and a few little hiccups, but everybody got done, a few guys lost out on fights, but everything went through pretty well, not too many problems. Uh, we've had nine events in 2019 and I'm gonna run through some stats real quick. Uh, promoters, Cyan Production LLC, uh, do a national tournament in April of last year, over 200 competitors, we had over 260 bouts in three days, there were 24 suspensions, nine 60-day suspensions, fire department had to be called for two injuries, uh, one injury needed treatment was a dislocated, uh, ankle, the other one was a neck injury which, uh, actually needed no treatment, was just a precaution, uh, he kind of fell and hit his neck on the bottom rope, it was kind of, it was kind of ugly looking, so, uh, medical decided to move him out. He came back to the tournament with just a soft collar on, he took no treatment, made no file for insurance. We also had a second tournament in December, which is a regional tournament, at the Broadway Recreation Center, we had 115 fighters, we had 88 fights in one day, 17 suspensions, one 90-day suspension with a gentleman who received a broken jaw, uh, he received treatment. Suspensions on these tournaments, uh, most of them are TKOs, uh, referee stoppages for mismatches, lack of fitness, not so much ever getting hurt and being injured, uh, more just because they're not up to the level of competition. Most of these are also in the C class, which is the 0-3 fight division, so they're all new, new green guys and they're, they're learning, so, most of the stoppages are refereed because of mismatches or, or somebody being overwhelmed. Uh, next promoter is SSA Alliance LLC, they had, uh, two events in 2019, uh, they had 10 fights on one with two suspensions, both were 60 days due to knockouts. Their second event on October 26th, they had 19 fights, had, uh, two suspensions, also 60 days, also for knockouts. They recently just had one event, uh, February 22nd of 2020, they had 10 fights with two suspensions, uh, one of them was a 60-day for a minor cut. Uh, next promoter is Rising of the Prospects LLC in Tucson, they had three events in 2019 with 11 bouts, the first one was 11 bouts, six suspensions with no injuries. Their second show had 14 bouts, one suspension, no injuries. Their third show, we had 13 bouts, one suspension, no injuries. And we move on to our next promoter, Ruff MMA and Muay Thai, uh, their first bout this year, or 2019, sorry, they had eight fights with six suspensions, two of them were 60 days, one from a cut. Uh, their second event, uh, had eight fights with two suspensions, one 60-day with no injuries. So total of nine events, total bouts for 2019, 447 bouts overseen by the United States Muay Thai Association, total suspensions for 2019 were 61, total injuries that I know of, not knowing that if later on- Total injuries that I know of, not knowing that if later on after the fight someone found out they had an injury, that I know of, were two injuries and we had four cuts. Uh, there were two suspensions for non-injury, one suspension for a no-show at weigh-ins, got a six-month suspension. And another six-month suspension was for a young lady whose record went to 0-5 due to, uh, I think emotional stress. She would be winning her fight and then start gagging in the middle of a fight, feeling like she was nauseous and the referee would have to stop it. And so, after five losses like that, uh, I gave her a six-month suspension to work out her problems and work on her training. Wasn't even her training, she was winning most of these fights.
How old is she?
16.
Okay.
So, we suspended her for six months and she'll be competing in April. So, she, she, she stuck with it. Uh, we have three pros that have developed through our program. Uh, the newest one is Anthony Martinez, who started fighting with us, signed a contract with Lions Fight. Uh, Travis Clay had one fight this year and Nick Chastain went to, uh, a 4-0 year with Glory with three knockouts, is now ranked number eight in the world with Glory. Uh, so, we had a, we had a very good year. Coming up for 2020, March 28th is Rise of the Prospects in Tucson. April 17th, Ruff Muay Thai is doing another event here in Tempe. And April 23rd through the 26th, we have national tournaments starting again here in, I think this is our seventh tournament. So, uh, the year is kicking off pretty good. So, with suspensions and injuries, uh, by looking at them, what I kind of noticed was the events that are more traditional Muay Thai seem to have less suspensions for TKOs, uh, they're both playing the same game. When promoters tend to bring MMA guys in, uh, one guy's playing one game, one guy's playing the other game, and it usually becomes a very sloppy fight and something bad usually happens. Uh, and I just noticed when I'm doing my report, we also have the fights, but when they, they cross over, the MMA guys are not doing Muay Thai. So, it becomes a bit of a sloppy fight and injuries happen, there's stoppages, there's, it just doesn't work so well. So, a lot of preventing of injuries seems to be in the matchmaking. Uh, so, we are going with the IFMA standards for matchmaking. So, we have A, B, and C fighters. C fighters are from zero to three fights and then it goes from four to eight fights and then over eight fights, it just goes unlimited forever. So, we try and keep all the fighters in the matchmaking within those brackets. So, when I approve the matches, we, that's the standards that we're trying to use. Unless someone's, you know, you know, we have a phenom that's growing quickly, uh, we'll, we'll take a look at that individually. But other than that, that's, that's pretty much our year.
So, so that's, one of the questions that I actually wrote down for myself was noticing that most of your suspensions were about two per event and then you jumped to the MMA promoter, Ruff, and you had eight bouts, six suspensions. You were doing 19 bouts with only two suspensions. So, I was kind of, that was one of the questions I wrote, is that a matchmaker issue? And that's what it sounds like, it's, it's pairing your A, B, and C fighters correctly. And are you guys using Jason Martinez for that as well?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, their, their matchmaking, uh, paper kind of looks okay. One guy might have two fights, Mike, one guy might have two fights. But they're, they're two different fighters in two different games. So, it, it makes for a sloppy bout. One guy's playing basketball, another guy's playing volleyball.
Sure, sure. Okay.
So, it doesn't, doesn't make for nice clean fights. Real hard on referees.
So, it's, yeah, it's also matching their skill sets and you're, you're putting a guy who might be a, a great MMA competitor against a guy who might be a, a great Muay Thai fighter. That doesn't work the same as it does in MMA, because if it's a boxer versus an MMA fighter, you don't know if the fight's gonna be a stand-up fight or if it's gonna go to the ground. It's a little different in, in this, when you have two very similar sports, um, and trying to partner, you know, the, the different rules of both. Yeah, so I get that.
I don't think it works in MMA either, but...
Yeah.
The rules are loose, they're so big on the ground and...
Sure.
So, we've, we've had a good year. We've been on top of the injuries. For big tournaments like that, to have only one real serious injury is, is great and it's, it's been kind of like that for all the years we've been doing it. But, uh, it's usually the newer guys who get hurt and, like I said, a lot of the TKOs are just preventative and, uh, that's also how we get the tournaments moving.
Sure. I have just two more questions for you. Um, on the, on the Cyan fight, the person that got hurt on the neck on the bottom rope, do you guys check the tightness of the bottom rope?
We do.
Okay, okay.
I think if it was softer, it may not have affected his neck as much.
Right, right.
But, you know, they need to be hard, so it was, it was just kind of an unusual fall.
Yeah, that bottom rope, like especially in boxing, we always try to keep just a little bit looser, just so that you don't have that issue of having that super tightness and causing a neck injury.
You know, Muay Thai is a little different, because you hit the ropes and you work on the ropes a lot more.
Right.
So, it's, it's a little different. The bottom ones are, you know, not hit as much, you know, it's just an unusual fall and, uh, it happens. We learn from all these things. We never, we think we see everything and then something else happens.
Cool. And then one last thing was, um, on the 16-year-old with, uh, six-month suspension, she comes back in her first fight, what's your guys' plan if she gets the same repeat? Are you gonna do another six month? Are you gonna do indefinite? What's the...
I don't know. Gonna have to talk to her coach and her parents and, you know, maybe there's a physical problem.
Yeah.
You know, that they need to look into. But, uh, she did good in her fight. She wasn't being overwhelmed. She would just get, all of a sudden, in the middle of a fight, she would start getting nauseous and spit out her mouthpiece and, you know, look like she was gonna vomit.
Huh.
And, you know, referee stopped it and, uh, we'd have to have to talk to her. But, you know, she's grown a little bit. She's almost 18-years-old now.
Okay.
So, we'll see what happens in April.
Cool. Thanks, Bob.
All right, thank you.
Jonathan, do you have any commission, uh, questions commissioners? I kind of took your time.
Uh, I do, now, Mr. Jeff, or, uh, Mr. Meneses, how are you doing? Yes, uh, Bob, thank you so much. Good to hear your voice. Been a while. I'm starting out there to, uh, shake your hand.
No, you're not. You're not why. I'm sorry.
(laughing).
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Um, very thorough and really helpful to know what's going on out there. You are busy, to the least, and doing a great job. We appreciate your efforts.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Um, let's move on and talk about Sanda.
Yes, miss... Yeah, Mr. Yan Khan is in attendance. He is here, he'll, he'll speak to you. You might either come a little closer or just talk a little louder, just so they can hear it.
Thank you. Uh, hi, uh, gentlemen, uh, this is Yan Khan representing, uh, Arizona Sanda Association. For, uh, uh, 2019, we have, uh, two major events. One is the, uh, Nationals and we had, uh, 30 athletes, 20 adults and 10 minors and five adults made to the national team, representing the U.S. at the 15th World Wushu Championship and bring back the bronze medal for the USA. And, uh, the athlete's name's Alex Sisney. He's also the, uh, the U.S. Team Captain for men's, uh, 80-kilo division. And in the, during the Nationals, there was, uh, one medical suspension was issued due to the, uh, dislocated shoulder. That was a 16-years-old, uh, athlete, uh, pretty rookie. I think he only has, uh, about a year, uh, experience. Also, he was fighting his classmates, so it's kind of a rookie fighting rookie kind of situation. And also, all the records has been submitted, including the, uh, the scores to the commission as required. And in November, uh, 10th, we have another event called the, uh, 2019 American Martial Arts Championship. The promoter's name is Shaolin Temple, uh, Shaolin Temple, uh, Culture Center of Arizona. Uh, the event was hosted in, uh, Bogo Junior High in Chandler. We have 15 athletes, only two adults and 13 minors. There was no suspension of any kind was issued. And for this year, uh, there was a plan, uh, there was an event planned on, uh, March 7th, but was postponed by the, uh, promoter, uh, due to the conflict, conflict of scheduling. So, the event is being pushed to the second half of, uh, 2020. And, uh, for, uh, in May, we still have our UFC WKF National Team Trials and National Championships again. This time will be in Mesa from, uh, May 22nd to May 24th. And projected with, uh, more than 3,000, uh, 300 audience, but, uh, with the certainty of the COVID-19 issue, so hopefully it will solve, because it's gonna be in May and it's gonna be really hot in here, what is not gonna be, uh, affected by the pandemic, I heard is being issued today, yeah. And projected, we're gonna have more, more than 50 competitors, since this year it was also, uh, include the junior team trial. And the selected team will actually present the U.S. to compete at Pan American Wushu Championship in Brazil, uh, and the Junior World Wushu Championship in Morocco at the end of this year. Uh, we have also another, uh, planned events, uh, in, uh, either August or, uh, November. It's actually the second, uh, American Martial Arts Championship, also, uh, presented by Shaolin Temple. Uh, and we're also, the, we're also working with another promoter to, uh, work on an international level of Sanda tournament. It's more like inviting other national, uh, team members, uh, uh, team members of other na- nations come here to giving, uh, a demonstration fights and things like those. Uh, for the sports development during the, uh, uh, last year, uh, judge certificates, we actually now have 11 fully certified judges, uh, in, uh, in the state. Six of them are state, uh, judges and four of them are national and there's one international judge. Uh, we basically have two judges course in, uh, this year, January and, uh, last year, October, uh, in last year. And, uh, five national-level judges were certified last, during the last year's Nationals and one of them is actually from Louisiana. So, uh, there's a, there's another four state-level judges are actually pending to pass their practical exam during the, uh, this year's, uh, Nationals. And also, uh, during this year's Nationals, uh, we have already got the, uh, authorization from Pan American Wushu Federation to, uh, host the Pan American-level judge certificate, uh, certificate course, uh, which actually between May 21st to, uh, May 24th. And all these judges will be actually qualified to, uh, present the U.S. to judge at the Pan American level, uh, also in all the other regional events in the, uh, American continent. Uh, we also schedule another state-level judge course, uh, in, uh, July and the October for this year. And also, in next month, we're, we're scheduling the first, uh, coach certification, uh, in the state, because the, the sport is seeming, uh, seems like picking up, uh, popularity. So, we wanna have more schools, uh, have, uh, standardized, uh, program to teach Sanda from the basic and then, uh, to the, uh, more advanced level. Uh, so, in the community, for now, we have three martial schools, uh, are, are actually offering Sanda programs and two Chinese schools actually introduce the Sanda as their extra curricular classes. And, uh, at the, at the university level, Arizona State just officially adapted Sanda as one of their physical education class, providing to a college credit. And actually, uh, spring semester is the first semester I was teaching at the university.
Is that something you're responsible for? Getting ASU to adopt it?
Yes, sir.
Wow, that's awesome. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
That's really good.
Uh, so, in the news, I think everybody watched the UFC 2, uh, uh, 248 and Sanda-based fighter, Gan Wei Li, actually defended her title this time. And, uh, Dana White, I think she's, uh, uh, can ma- she can match Conor McGregor and, uh, Ronald Rodri for the star power. So, so, the Sanda as the, as her base is kind of gaining the momentum and popularity across the valley and actually across the world, I, I actually pick up a lot of media, uh, exposure and activities in, uh, both in China and overseas. So, a lot of discussion about the sports and all that. And so, uh, also for the professional collaboration, we're looking for, we're really looking forward to have more promoters can work with us together to, to have more Sanda events. Currently, we only have two active promoters, uh, working with us. One is the United Martial Arts Academy, another one is the Shaolin, uh, Temple Culture Center. But statewide, uh, in the state, we really hope, uh, other promoters would, would like to pick up some of the Sanda events and we can work with them, since it's, it's a relatively new sport in the United States and, uh, it's also means, uh, a ground for opportunity and we can definitely work with the promoters for, for keeping the sanctions being, uh, at minimal. Yeah. So, basically, we really had a good, good year for last year as our very first year, uh, in Arizona. So, we're also looking forward to have a, a better year in, uh, 2020. Thank you, sir.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions before I, before I jump in with mine? I don't want to take your time.
(inaudible) please, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay. Um, do you follow some of the same matchmaking standards like the Bob laid out?
Basically, now the association taking care of all the ma- uh, matchmaking, all those kind of administration protocols. We don't have so-called certified, uh, matchmakers or licensed or, or qualified personnel. So, we're, as myself and the international judges, we're the only, uh, certified person doing that. So, we're kind of keeping those in-house. Every time there's the events, we actually got the roster of the athletes, we talk to our coaches, uh, ask about their experience and actually make the matchmaking, uh, by the association.
So, so we'll talk about that. I, I, to me, I think that's a conflict for you to be the chief regulator of that sport and also be the matchmaker.
Okay.
That doesn't seem like...
We're working...
Two things, and, and, yeah, sorry, that's maybe that's what it is, we just gotta talk about how, what your plan is.
Yes, sir.
Um, but I think it's kind of hard for you to regulate the matchmaking process, what you're overseeing. So, it kind of puts you in, in both, both seats.
Definitely.
So, we'll talk about that.
Yeah.
Um, you talked about the five adults from the national team representing the U.S. Any of those from Arizona?
Uh, no, sorry.
No.
Not, not yet. Maybe in the future, definitely.
Can you develop some athletes that'll go represent us?
We're working on that, definitely.
All right. Um, the dislocated shoulder, how long was his suspension for?
Uh, that was actually until he's being cleared by the surgeon.
Oh, good. Is there a minimum suspension to put in?
It's very, it's very minimal. We just, uh, put, um, as a precaution kind of measure. So, and next time, if, uh, he wanna compete, he needs a clearance from the surgeon.
Okay. I, I would recommend on anyone like that where it's a serious injury, a minimum of 60 or 90 days. And then it's a 60 minute, 60, 90 minimum, um, whichever one you feel is more appropriate. And then also until cleared by, uh, ORSO, um, for that.
Yes, sir.
But that way, um, he has to at least meet that first standard to let everything re-heal and then go see the doctor and, and before he goes back out, so he doesn't re-injure that...
Yes, sir.
...part. Um, how long is your, uh, judge training? How long does it take?
Uh, that takes, uh, three hours.
Three hours?
Yeah.
And how long is the training good for?
That's for two years.
Two years? Good. And the last thing was just, yeah, just saying it's a huge accomplishment to have ASU, um, uh, adopt, uh, Sanda as a physical education program.
Thank you, sir.
So, that's, you know, congrats to you.
Thank you.
It's a lot of hard work and, uh, that's good. It's awesome.
Thank you, sir.
Cool. Thank you.
Yes, uh, congratulations and, uh, we are, uh, very fortunate to have such thorough people involved, I guess, outside sanctioning bodies, uh, looking forward to the future and, uh, gotta get out of Sanda and, and an IKF event and a, an NCA event. So, it's gonna be my focus going forward, um, shows. Thanks so much. We're all about fighter safety and matchmaking and, uh, you are as well. So, again, congratulations and thanks so much for being so thorough. Commissioner Pennington, any thoughts or questions?
Uh, no, Mr. Jeff, I, I just have, well, I'll wait until, uh, we're finished with this section, then I'll make a general comment about the outside sanctioning bodies.
Okay, very good. Uh, let's press on. Let's talk about the IKF of Arizona.
Yeah, so the... Yeah, the IKF is not present, I'm just gonna present just a quick, couple of quick things on their behalf. Uh, Ms. Sandra Olding is still, uh, running the IKF of Arizona. They are working their, uh, their best to ensure that they adhere to our rules and regulations as well as the IKF standards, um, which the IKF is based out of California, so they frequently meet and talk with them to adhere to their high standards as well. Um, they are looking at trying to expand into another, uh, modified form. They did submit their rules, um, at this time, their rules, um, are kind of back where the drawing board when we first started, uh, talking with, um, the IKF of Arizona, Ms. Sandra Olding. They have submitted a general rule set and not a specific rule set. Um, the general rule set they submitted does include things that they are prohibited from doing or sanctioning, so I've kicked it back to them and told them that we will, uh, revisit that when it's ready and once we can ensure that it meets the standards. But for now, um, they do have an event coming up this Saturday in Prescott Valley. They're kind of maintaining in that market. They've continued to grow sponsorships in that market, um, and they're continuing to have successful events according to them. So, we wish them the best and we will keep tracking and seeing how they are doing.
Very good. Very good. Thank you. And again, thank you for your time and efforts with, uh, with that sanctioning bodies. Uh, it's critical that you can see what our expectations are and hold them to it. We appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
All right. Let's continue on. Let's talk about the Arizona Chief Officials.
Okay. So we talked about this before. Um, I, we've always had a chief inspector position, which was, uh, Manny Valenzuela. Um, I've decided to also add other chief officials, um, to, uh, help us out in the commission as well. You know, these are all people that are experts in their field and that have been doing these positions for a long time. And so they bring a lot of knowledge, um, and support to the commission. So Al Guyney is our chief MMA official, uh, for referee. He is working on developing a, uh, handout or a packet to help our Arizona referees. As we continue to watch these events that, you know, take place around the nation, these televised events such as UFC and Top Rank and Matchroom and Bellator, um, it's also an opportunity for us to use those, those events as a learning opportunity. And so when you look at those events and you find that some mistakes have been made either in officiating or, or other things, we can use those and we can learn from those. So, um, Al is in the process of developing, um, some curriculum that our referees can, can look to so that we can try to avoid some of those similar, uh, mistakes and continue to work on being the best commission that we can. Chris Flores is our chief boxing judge. Um, that is, uh, really good. Chris has continued to be selected as a, uh, boxing judge in numerous world title fights around the world. I think over the last six months, he has flown to at least six different fights outside of Arizona, um, to be assigned to different world title fights, including, um, in Asia, in California, in Nevada, and there's some other opportunities coming up pretty soon. So that has helped and Chris is also helping develop a, uh, strong boxing judge plan as well. Manny, um, is still one of our chief referees. I've expanded to additional people, Ryan McCollum and Chris Marlin. These are people that are, um, very knowledgeable of their position as an inspector. They've been around the commission for a long time and they will uphold the high standards that we are trying to put in place to ensure that our events are regulated where they should be. And last is our chief boxing referee, Wes Melton. Wes has been a, in the boxing world for, I think, over forty years. Um, he's been a referee for a number of those years, um, and has worked in multiple, uh, multitude of title fights. He's also been, uh, called on to go to other sanctioning organizations that help teach. So, uh, Wes is also another great asset. We've been using Wes a lot lately, especially with our boxing debuters, to go to the gym to evaluate them and give a recommendation on approving them before turning pro. I think that has also helped see some of the fight quality, um, in the boxing, local boxing scene, uh, improve because of ensuring that we are only licensing people that are absolutely, um, ready to compete at this level. And that's it?
That's, that's, that's perfect. Thank you so much. Commissioner, any thoughts or questions?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just generally on that whole set, those quarterly updates, as well as the chief officials. I just wanna commend Mr. Meneses, uh, for the work that he does and working with these outside sanctioning bodies, just as you had said earlier, and the level of professionalism that I'm beginning to see or, or am seeing, uh, that is developing for Arizona with all of the combat sports. And I just wanna commend Mr. Meneses for the hard work that he's putting in doing that.
I appreciate it. Carlo, Carlo is also very instrumental in helping all this. It's, puts a lot of workload on him as well, but, uh, he's, he's been a great asset in helping out and ensuring that we keep everything flowing, um, smoothly and correctly. So I can't take all the credit, but I appreciate it.
Well, it was meant to share. It was meant to share.
Yeah, but if I didn't call him out, he'd give me, he'd give me stuff about it later. So I had to give him his kudos now.
When I, when I first came on board, one of the most frightening concepts of this whole thing was regulating what were called outside sanctioning bodies. It seemed impossible and, uh, you have done a spectacular job of attracting good people who share our approach and ideology and your communication with them, I think, has really helped too. I think, uh, they know where they stand, they know what we expect, um, because of that, they're force and, and we feel confident in them. So it's, again, it, it comes back to you and Carlo and I can't thank you enough. It's the only way this could possibly gone well.
Thank you. I think, uh, I think Carlo has a little speech prepared. He's gonna, I'm just teasing. Just wanted to put him on the spot for a second.
Uh, all right. Let's, let's talk about the updated commission meeting schedule.
So the meeting schedule's in there. I did not put the, sir, I'm sorry. I did not put the, um, the event schedule notice is not part of the packet just because, um, the way we put the, um, events on now, it would require us to actually create another document to share that calendar with you. So the best thing I could just recommend is for the events calendar is just to check out the website. I have everything up there through the end of May as of right now. Um, the next week or two, I'll have it through the end of June. Um, but that's gonna be the most accurate to keep you guys appraised, um, as events, you know, get postponed or anything else like that. We can immediately drop them off and make sure that, that record is accurately reflected. So the only thing that's on here now is the updated commission meeting schedule. Just as a reminder, um, that is included. The dates have not changed from we first had proposed and accepted back in January. So after this, our next meeting will be on Tuesday, April seventh. However, in a minute, I will talk to you about a special meeting we need to do at the end of this month.
Uh, very good. Um, okay. Commissioner, any thoughts about our meeting schedule?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman. I'm comfortable with meeting schedule. Uh, what I would request is if Mr. Meneses or Carlo or whomever could just shoot us an email with any new events that have been, uh, scheduled or approved so that, uh, we don't constantly just go to the website and check to see what the event is.
Sure. I'll, I'll look into it, see how we can get that out to you timely. Thank you.
Okay. Just, yeah, something, something just to let us know so that we can plan whatever we need.
Okay. Sounds good. And, uh, Mr. Chairman, I just advise that Mr. Tony Lopez from item B two is on the line. So if we can jump back up before we move on.
Uh, very good. Let's do that. Mr. Lopez, welcome. Uh, we are doing great. Let's go to B two pursuant to ARS sections five dash two-two-seven, five dash two-two-eight and AAC R nineteen dash two dash C six oh four for persons over the age of thirty-six, the twenty-twenty professional MMA consensus versus applications submitted by Mr. Mark Anthony Lopez. Mr. Meneses, please speak to Mr. Lopez's application, please.
Uh, yes, sir. I have not had an opportunity to speak to Mr. Lopez, um, directly before the meeting. Um, as you know, we jumped on and he's on the call only. So he has submitted all of his required paperwork. Um, he has been licensed by this commission in years past, I believe as of last year as well. But the additional questions that we have, I do not have the answers for. So if you don't mind, I'll just ask him now. Uh, Mr. Lopez, if you can let the commission know, what is your workout routine and what does it consist of?
Um, I'm training, I had a CFB important, probably, I come down three days a week, you know, with ground stand-up, everything different. Um, around at home, I run, I need two to three rounds a day, um, do a little bit of training and stuff like that. And that's basically my workouts right now, going up to the spire.
And, and your three days a week, how long are those sessions?
Excuse me?
How long are the sessions you do three days a week?
Uh, it's about two and a half hours.
Okay. Two and a half hours. And do you do any additional strength and conditioning training, um, or is it all cardio and fight related?
No, no, it's, uh, that's part of when I lift my weights. It's, uh, strength and conditioning, it's, uh, circuit, the speed and all that kind of stuff and strength and conditioning too, so.
Okay. And what's your current?
That's what I do at home.
What's your?
Come in the gym, we can ground, we can stand up, we can fit knee, five kinds of stuff.
And what's your current age?
Uh, forty-six.
And record?
Uh, record is, I believe, sixty-four and thirty-two.
All right. Commissioner, sixty-four and thirty-two is his record. Age forty-six. He does have a, you know, a decent workout regimen. We have seen him compete in the past. Um, I don't have any concerns. Um, he is getting up there in age, um, uh, for a fighter, uh, definitely. But I, I don't have any concerns after seeing him in the cage, um, that he can hold his own, uh, against guys half his age.
Thank you, Mr. Meneses. Commissioner, thoughts, questions for Mr. Lopez?
Yes, Mr. Lopez, uh, what was the delay in your joining us in this meeting today?
I'm sorry?
What, what delayed you in joining us today on the meeting?
Um, actually, I, I, I called that, I believe it was, uh, seven after and I just been on the line waiting ever since, so, uh, I've got a chance to speak.
Oh, okay. So you, you've been with us and, uh, enjoying all the work today?
All of the things you had to talk about.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank, thank you, Mr. Lopez. I appreciate it.
Uh-huh.
If I may?
Chairman, it's a question. Do you want to answer it? Yes, please, please.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I just have one question. Mr. Lopez, is there an event that you're hoping to take, uh, part in, uh, coming event?
Yes, yes. It's, uh, on, uh, the fourteenth of this month, in the side path.
Okay, okay. And you, right, right. You feel solid and ready to go, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Okay. I have no further questions. If there are any other motions, there is no more.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I apologize for jumping in a minute ago. Pursuant to ARS five dash two-two-seven, five dash two-two-eight and AAC R nineteen dash two dash C six oh four, uh, for a fighter over age thirty-six, I'm hoping we grant a, uh, MMA, professional MMA license, uh, renewal license for Mr. Mark Anthony Lopez.
Very good. We have a motion. I'm going to second the motion. We have a motion and a second. Hold the favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries two to zero unanimously. Mr. Lopez, congratulations and best of luck.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
We appreciate your time. Thanks for calling in. Take care now. All right. Let's run back to item D, our call of the commission. Commission members or the executive director of the committee, make summary of current events, ask questions and/or make comments. Gentlemen, Mr. Meneses, something you'd like to talk about?
Yeah, I'll just quickly jump in and share, um, the coronavirus, uh, C-oid nineteen or COVID nineteen, whatever you call it. Um, we are staying up to date on it. You know, that's obviously something where it could affect us as a regulatory body that sanctions, um, fighters for, that are flying in from, you know, other states, other, other areas, other countries, um, as well as, you know, having a room full of spectators. Um, at this time, it has really only affected one event and that was the Combate event. Combate has decided, um, to, as a business decision for all of their march card, is to do those in a studio and have those still done and filmed so the fights still go on, um, but to, uh, have no crowd spectating public to reduce that risk. Um, I've talked to some other promoters for the upcoming events, especially the TV events such as LFA, which is next Friday. Um, and at this point, they do not have plans to, to postpone or reschedule. Um, we have not received any word, um, from the state that we will be doing any of that. However, one of our employees here at the office is on, uh, temporary assignment over at the Arizona Health Department to keep us up to date on the latest, uh, news of what's going on and the developments of this virus. So we'll keep on watching. Anyone that does decide to postpone, um, out of precaution for the virus, the commission is not charging them a rescheduling fee. We are just letting them reschedule, um, uh, whatever dates are available that they are able to. So we're working with promoters if they would like to reschedule. Uh, any questions on that one before I move on? All right.
I appreciate this. I appreciate Mr. Meneses informing us about this. So thank you, sir. Yeah. Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Um, and then I briefly mentioned, uh, we will do, we'll need to do a special commission meeting on Tuesday, March thirty-first. Um, that is at the end of the month. That is going to be for two over age fighters, which will be on the April fourth card in Prescott Valley. Um, those are kind of last minute additions that were unable to make it on this agenda. Um, after the postponement of Combate, that freed up several athletes that still wanted to fight here in Arizona. So they started contacting many promoters and trying to jump on other cards that were coming up. And so, uh, WFF is wanting to put two, um, uh, two more bouts together. Um, two of the guys are over the age, so they would need to be special, have special commission approval. So we'll definitely do a meeting that day. It would be the only items on the agenda, so it should be, you know, a matter of just a few minutes just to get those reviewed and considered.
Okay. Okay. Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Pennington, you might look at your calendar, anticipation of March thirty-first and see what you can squeeze in. Certainly. Okay. Very good. Any other thoughts, Mr. Meneses?
Uh, no. Just the other, the other last thing I had was, I said no, but then I said yes. Um, the only other thing I had was, uh, for the TGB, they have one other title fight at this point. That is a World Boxing Association Super Lightweight Title, uh, versus Bartholomew versus Puyol, who is twenty-seven, one and one versus seventeen and oh. Um, that will, um, also be a, uh, a good title fight, um, for both these guys. Bartholomew's coming off of a split, uh, split draw, it looks like, um, on his last fight in a, April of last year. And then another fight that they're considering, uh, that may be a title, but it's on the card for now. It's listed as a twelve-rounder, so I'm assuming that they're looking for a title for this is gonna be Michael Rivera, who's eighteen and oh, versus Marcos Viasana, who is twenty-five and six. Um, both are coming off of KO wins. And so if they are able to make that a title bout, that'll be another great one. This is for the premier boxing champion. So if you're familiar with that series, there usually is a few titles on their card. So that'll be an exciting night for boxing here in Arizona. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, the PBC cards are, um, are nicely filled, so I'm looking forward to, that's what we're working on already. Any chance to get any of the locals on their card?
Uh, I know, I know that several have, um, been working and talking with it. I talked to Iron Boy the other day and there is discussions about Trini Ochoa, um, whether or not, um, he will be on there and some other locals. Um, you know, that was one of the, uh, things that, uh, previous promoter that had come in from out of state had commented that they wanted to ensure they had more local fighters because there is a big local fan following or fan base for a lot of local guys. So I know that, uh, Mr. Brown's promotion is also considering that as well and looking what talent we have here. And Arizona does have a, a big, uh, talent pool for both MMA and boxing. So I don't think they'll have a hard time finding those, those people to put on the bouts on the undercards.
Very good. Very good. Thank you. Mr. Pennington, we're in the call of the commission. Anything you'd like to bring up?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Meneses has already addressed, uh, the concern that I have. So thank you.
Very good.